So, just a few slides. We want to give some even deeper context to the different layers of input in which we use to develop the proposed budget that's before you over the last several months. So, obviously, you know, our desire is to be the fastest improving school district in the state of Tennessee. You've seen this several times, the community priorities that we heard from the community sessions in which we had across the county. Several feedback opportunities in which we have structured within our district. We have teacher-focused groups. We had 25 representatives here in, right here in this room in January, in which we just had a great opportunity to talk about a wide range of topics. Additionally, you all know that we have collaborative conferencing and had a great collaborative conferencing session. See several members of that team here this evening. We also do district-wide climate surveys, and so I think this is a testament to our teachers. We had 87% of our teachers participate and also students. We had 61% of our students participate in that. Each of our executive directors, we have teacher advisory councils as well as parent advisory councils in each of our learning communities. And then we have a student advisory council that meets monthly, has met monthly, had our last meeting the month of April and had great sessions with them. So, from teachers, this is what we heard as priorities from the different areas in which we were able to get feedback, increasing social emotional supports in regards to accelerating student achievement, additional special education assistance, academic intervention as to support students' learning. We heard in regards to future-ready students, increasing the number of our teachers, continuing to invest in technology and expand the one-to-one initiative. In particular, at the middle school level as well as elementary, what we heard, what we hear at the middle school level is, as we implemented one-to-one, we took, and I'll always get this wrong, so I look to, I'm looking at Ben as I'm saying this, the T-22s? N-22s. We had N-22s, which that's just a number of the Chromebook, but that was our most recent device. We made all of the other ones new and we kept the N-22s, and so we heard from them the desire to update the eighth grade level is where they are, as well as at the elementary level. Obviously, you know, we have a plan to go one-to-one in high school, but as well as more access at the elementary level. We heard providing funding for college trips for teachers as far as a priority or one of those themes. Obviously, our teachers shared concerns around compensation and funding for professional development and professional learning opportunities. In regards to engaged community, we heard about providing education resources for our parents, obviously, and I always share this, that 83% of a child's life is outside of, K-12 life is outside of the school, and so trying to impact that 17%. And then in regards to effective and efficient operations, capital maintenance, IT support staff. Right now, you know currently how we're structured, that each school has a teacher building rep that deals with technology and with the influx of technology and that investment, the challenge around that. Additional school resource officers and funding field trips, transportation. Student priorities from students, we heard, socially-emotional needs by creating buddy mentor programs. And so I'll share that, and it's, this is one of probably the biggest highlight, one of the bigger highlights of the different groups that I get to meet with has been our students, very insightful in what they share. A recognition system for academic achievement, and you may not know, each of our schools had an action plan that they worked on with Karen Glenn and did some really neat work. They talked about college career prep and guidance in regards to great teachers and leaders. Student involvement with administration, several of our schools, Lookout Valley comes to mind, several of our schools, the principal started a model of this, kind of a student leadership team in which they meet with. In regards to engaged community, student projects to support the community, and in regards to effective and efficient operations, improvement to school buildings and athletic fields. So you've seen this graphic, the five areas in which we are focused upon as we look at fulfilling the goals within future-ready 2023. Budget highlights, you know, we've proposed a 5% salary increase for teachers and professional employees and a 4% for classified, and the difference in those percentages being the requirement for two days of professional learning, and then the 15.1 appropriation for capital maintenance at the 48 schools. And looking a little bit deeper at teachers, you can see from this graphic how we line up in regards to where we currently are in green and where we propose to be, being the purpled colored bar that's going across the top, but these are local systems, also in North Georgia as well, but Cleveland, Bradley, Dayton, and Dade, you see where we currently rank and where they are. In regards to the climate survey around learning environments, what we heard from students that is only 33% of high school students are proud of how their school building looks, this comes directly from the climate survey. Budget highlights, you know, we're looking to propose to add truancy officers to achieve a caseload of 1 to 250 officer to chronically absent students, and this direct correlation to student support. Then alternative classroom monitors in every high school, behavior specialist and elementary teacher, elementary behavior teacher in each learning community to support attendance and behavior. The climate survey showed us that 50% of teachers said chronic absenteeism is a problem at their school, and so our teachers are teaching and working hard, and the presence of the students is important to them and it's important to us. In regards to the climate survey around behavior, 53% of middle school students said they are distracted from school to work by students acting out in class, and that's a reality that exists. Obviously, you all know we're doing some things that don't require additional money, like making our code of acceptable behavior more robust, Ken's been working with Scott on that, but then also just the supports that are in place for our teachers and our students as we work on student behavior. Budget highlights around the arts, you know, we propose adding 11 art teachers so that all elementary schools achieve at least two days of arts, and then increasing funds to support early post-secondary opportunity expansion so that every student in Hamilton County across all of our high schools have the opportunity to take five courses or sit for industry certifications. And then the full-time college and career advisor at every high school, you know, those roles are currently half-time and trying to move them to full-time. The climate survey told us this, when you say the students look forward to going to school, 73% of elementary school students share that they do, 49% of middle school and roughly 40% of high school students in regards to the climate survey. In regards to aspirations, only 51% of high school students think that what they're learning in class is important to their future, so ensuring that there's a direct connection or correlation to the early post-secondary opportunity or the career interest that they are interested in is of extreme importance. And obviously, we've done some things that are low-funding types of things, such as future-ready institutes, but we have to continue to accelerate in that area. So, again, just want to give a little more context in regards to the building of the budget, the different points of input in which we use to really try to make sure that this is reflective of the community priorities which you've seen, but also our teachers and leaders and our students. Student voice is critically important to us in the formulation of a budget. So, at this time, I mean, there's not really a prescribed format, but you all have had your budget binders, and Brent and department heads are here to answer any and all questions that we possibly can at this time.
Ms. Thurman.
Yes. Well, I like most, I guess everybody had the meeting with the superintendent and the mayor this week. There were some questions that I still have. When we got these new positions, I know, Nikia, you went through and you marked off where the new positions were for the ones that were in this year, we hired this year, but there are a lot of positions I don't see on here. I know none of the learning community facilitators positions were on here. I know there were at least, I know the people's names, I don't know, and I hate to say their names, but I do know that there were at least one, two, three more positions in the central office that are not on here, and I was just wondering why.
Yeah, so Ms. Thurman, the learning community facilitators would have been included in the adopted budget, and so this listing of all the positions added during fiscal year 19 are all the positions that were added through amendments since the adoption of the original budget.
Well, I know, I asked for the positions that were added from the time that we approved the initial budget, how many people were hired in the central office. I mean, I looked and I took the 100 pages of job descriptions out of here that made our budget binder so full, there were over 100 pages, I counted them, and that was really not what I was looking for. I was looking for mostly people in the central office, and there were just very few that were on this list, I guess, that were in the central office, which is mainly what I wanted to see, those positions, and I would still like to have those, please. I've asked for them, I know Steve, because I called Steve to see if I was missing something here, and I was not. So that's one thing. Another thing is when I was looking through the capital projects and capital, and then even in the $3 million in the budget here, there was not one thing on either one of these that pertained to Cell Creek High School. Not one thing to help them with their football field. We're spending $6 million for Howard to have a football stadium, while Cell Creek High School does not even have a football field. Well, they have a football field to play on, but that was no thanks to the school system. That football field got leveled up by the county, by the county mayor, sent county equipment up there to level it up. The people up there laid the sod themselves, they put in their own sprinkler system, they maintain it themselves, but they still cannot use it because there are no lights, no bleachers, and no bathrooms there. So it looks like next year they're going to get to continue to drive for a whole year back and forth to Finley Stadium to play their football games, while every other high school in this county has a football stadium. And yet I see not one penny of money in here. I guess that we think it's sufficient just to give them money to rent Finley Stadium. I guess we feel like we're doing enough for them, or we're not. Also, at Cell Creek High School, there are a lot of things that, I did ask around about Cell Creek High School, they don't have middle school art class, they don't have a middle school foreign language, they don't have a registrar, they cut the position last week, cut one position that forced them to lose their E-Lab position, that's the E-Lab that Volkswagen put a hefty amount of money into, they don't even have anybody to stay in there now. Of course, they don't have ISS teacher, I know that's in this year's budget. They lost their before and after-school tutoring program, I don't know if that's because of loss of a grant or whatever. The funding for the ACT prep and practice tests were cut this year. Unable to offer high school advanced math and science courses, only able to fulfill graduation requirements with current staff. So any kids that want to take any higher-level math, they have to do it through dual enrollment, and some people have actually had to pay for some of these classes out of their own pocket, and some people, some teachers at the school have actually had to help pay for some of those, too. So, I don't see a lot of these things are being taken. Of course, I don't have any idea which, where some of these new positions are going to end up, but I would just about guarantee that none of them are going to be sent to Cell Creek. And also, Saudi Daisy Middle School, I think I saw on here what there's about $80,000, they're redoing the gym floor and doing a couple of things at Saudi Daisy Middle School. Like I told you during that meeting, some people who have moved into town and were just driving around to see where their kids were going to go to school, and others who were there for tournaments and what have you, call me, because I'm number one, number one school board member, District One, I'm the first one on the list, but I'm still number one, so it's apropos, it's fine. But anyway.
Number one in the program.
That's right, that's right. So, anyway, I'm the one that gets a lot of calls about a lot of things, and there were people that actually thought that was an abandoned building. "Ms. Thurman, where's the new Saudi Daisy Middle School?" "We're here," and it looks abandoned, while these other schools were worried about $180,000, you know, press boxes and things like that, and we have schools that people look at and actually think are abandoned, and we also have snakes in the school. I said, "The only good thing about having snakes is we don't have any rats." We did get rid of the bat problem, thank goodness, after a few years, the bats flying around the, in the gymnasium there and Cell Creek both, but I think we both got rid of the bat problem. But this continues to be a problem. We have, those portables at Saudi Daisy, they have been there over 40 years, I know they've been there at least that long. Those need to be torn down, and we need an addition to Saudi Daisy Middle School. And while all these other schools are getting all this stuff, and I see all this stuff in the budget, I'm wondering, who made this list? And were we asked about this? Are we waiting on somebody that we paid $500,000 to tell us we needed these things? I mean, common sense should dictate somewhere that we shouldn't have to wait on somebody to tell us what we need in some of these things. So this is one reason I'm really upset with this budget. It seems like we're loading up some schools to the hilt, and other schools, I mean, those schools are, they're not in Ray County, they are actually still in Hamilton County, Cell Creek is still in Hamilton County. And I'm just getting tired, I'm tired of them getting treated like the redheaded stepchild. And I know, everybody says, "I feel for you, I hate that, we're looking into it, I realize that's a problem." You know, all I get is lip service about these kind of things, and then I get this budget, and I see some of these, like 15 truant officers. Seriously? There are people at Cell Creek that really want to be there and show up every day that we can't even get teachers for, and we're going to pay for the truant officers? I'm more for taking care of the kids that want to show up for school every day than beating the bushes and dragging them in through the front door, and they don't want to be there, and a lot of them act out when they do get there. I wish we spent more time concentrating, what are these, what are these resource, I mean, what do these truancy officers make about, what's their, what is their salary? I saw one a little bit earlier, is it in the 40s? It's more than a teacher makes.
That's what's budgeted.
It includes their benefits.
Okay, okay, if we start a teacher, what's starting teacher pay? Okay, and we had $10,000 for their benefits, 48, we're right there. That's what I'm saying, it's as much as a teacher makes, I rest my case.
They're professionals and...
Well, I don't...
Hang on, guys, hang on, hang on, hang on. Go ahead, Ms. Thurman.
Okay, I just want, okay, I just want to know why a truancy officer is more important than getting a higher-level math teacher at Cell Creek. I know it's a small school, and they say, "Well, there won't be that many, won't be that many kids that probably take those classes anyway." That is not our problem. This, Utah, people keep on to talk about inequity, this right here is inequity, if I've ever seen it, and so I'm just having a real problem with some of these things. Did anybody else get the funding cap for the ACT prep and practice test? Did that happen to everybody? That happened to everybody? Why don't we...
I've had, they haven't had it for years.
Okay, well then, see, these are the kinds of things that we should be concentrating on instead of things like that.
I've had AP classes until this year.
Well, okay, then that's great, then you're singing my song. We still don't, you got them this year, we still don't have them. So, like I say, I'm more concerned about that than I am some of these things I see on this list that seem to be so vitally important that I just, and the assistant principals, I see Howard High School assistant principal, are they hiring another assistant principal? And so Hunter Middle School an assistant principal, are we hiring another assistant principal for Hunter Middle School? So we're going to have two assistant principals and a principal for a middle school.
Hang on, hang on. Dr. Johnson.
So I'll let Brent speak to staffing a little bit, what we're doing there, or Keith. I will say, Ms. Thurman, that you know that with what we're trying to do with proposal of this budget for, in the area of future-ready students around early post-secondary opportunities, we completely concur that access to those opportunities is important, and so that's why we're appropriating the dollars there to really accelerate that candidly across the district. In all fairness, I think you know, too, that, and I shared this with you, that I had no idea that Cell Creek didn't have a football stadium until they, until they walked in here last year, and then, and then, I just want to tell you the steps we took, and you know them, and then once we found that out, we immediately had conversation with the principal, and I'm not saying it's the solution, it's absolutely not the solution, but we immediately had conversation with the principal because, because, you know, it was like, well, we don't have a stadium for them, and they were paying, they were paying their own way to go to Finley Stadium, and so we absorbed that cost, which again is a very small...
That was awful nice of us, I just wanted to say.
Well, it was very small, but it was very small of us.
Yes, it was very small.
But, but, but again, that's the least I feel like we should be doing. But I agree with you in that, you know, when you start talking about a high school, you know, you build a high school, you know, and I think, you know, we, the mayor even had this conversation with me last year, you know, that we won't build any more schools that are high schools without the athletic complexes there, I think that has been the old model.
Okay, 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 Dr. Johnson, I was just going to say all of that. Okay, so if you build a new high school next week, then they're going to end up with a stadium, and Cell Creek's still not going to have one. So that, what we do from henceforth really is not important. What are we going to do about the problem at hand right now? All they've asked for are bleachers, lights, and a bathroom there so they can play their home games there. That's all they've asked for. What, we did some fast numbers the other day, somewhere between $400,000, $500,000 to try to get some of that stuff done. I see where we're spending all kinds of money on, I mean, I saw where we're spending $30,000 to give somebody some acoustics in a cafe lounge or something. I mean, seriously. And we have people, I mean, I'm sorry, but this, I've gone through this, I've tried to be nice, I don't know, I don't know who made this list up, I don't know if it's somebody that has a beef with me, I don't really care, but the people at Cell Creek have paid taxes for, it's one of the oldest parts of this county for, you know, many, many, many years, their families, longtime families live there, and they are just getting short-changed, and I am over it at this point, that they're being left out of a lot of things that other high schools have, and a lot of things that other middle schools have. I mean, we had to beg, borrow, and steal to even get a school up there because they were in portables for over 30 years. I mean, I wasn't asking a lot either, but I'm just tired of seeing all these other schools get this stuff, and Cell Creek, and all we can say is, "Well, from now on, we're not going to build schools like that." That is not an answer.
Mrs. Lennon.
Which I wanted to ask, Cell Creek Middle High School, how old is Cell Creek Middle High School? I mean, but didn't, is it not, haven't we recently renovated? When was it?
Addition. We moved the addition, broke, cut the ribbon, I guess, last year, year before last, yeah.
So we are out of the portables at Cell Creek Middle School now, aren't we? So I feel like we have done a lot to meet some of the needs, and I agree with the football stadium, and I hear that, but I think that we have done a lot at Cell Creek, just to be fair across the board, and there are needs at other schools. I think Cell Creek's looking really good, especially with the numbers that they have. I think I'm very proud of Cell Creek, I'm very proud of the way that it looks and that we've gotten all those mobiles classrooms gone, you know, and I hope that we can do it at all the other schools. I know that Spring Creek has a ton, and there's a lot of other schools, CSLA has a lot of mobile classrooms, so hopefully that we can do it like we did at Cell Creek. But I think that there's, you know, there's, I'm sure that the list was hard, but I think that we have to look at it across the board.
Well, one thing for point of clarity around the list is, this is a proposed list, that's the purpose of the list, it's proposed, so nothing in there is, you know, nothing in there is written in stone, so part of it's just our process, and I'm going to ask Justin, I know I'm putting you on the spot, but I just want to try to get an idea around a number that we can put out there. This is a proposed list, obviously, we're sending it up through the group that's doing our building of that, because, one, we want to make sure that whatever we invest in is the right thing. Justin, could you give us any idea on, you know, I guess, bleachers, bleachers light?
And a bathroom, space that people can go to the bathroom, you know, I mean...
So a bathroom facility, you're probably 200,000, I would say lighting, you're probably 250,000 bleachers for home side, and you're probably 150,000 for a visitor, and 150,000 for home side. So, just going back in that conversation, I mean, we have purchased property that is adjacent to Cell Creek for...
That's true.
I think around $750,000, so I think, I think in the big grand scheme of things, I think that's the next step, is I would just hate to invest that much money on that, just on that location. I think now that's the first step we've made, we have the property.
And I understand that, but how many years, how many years are we looking down the road for a stadium on that new property that we bought? How many years? Four, five?
That's a question.
What are they supposed to do between now and there? Are they going to continue to have to do this? It don't have to be anything fancy. I mean, I don't even care if you just put one section, there's not got that many people going to go to Cell Creek ballgames anyway, because there are not that many people that live up there.
Right.
To go to the ballgames.
I think that's...
But I don't care if you have to get them from someplace else in the county, portable ones that you can move around, I don't care. But put lights up on it, and you don't have to have any, we don't want 180-something thousand-dollar press box, just give them some bathrooms up there. I mean, it doesn't have to be anything really, really fancy, and like I say, I know that I would like to see a stadium built on the new property, but that's years down the road.
Yeah, I just think, yeah, I just think big picture, I think that's the, I think that's the direction.
And then another thing about the building, about the building on the Cell Creek Middle, people must understand, we didn't just have portables at Cell Creek High School, we had an entire middle school, the entire middle school, everything there, and we had two bathrooms for the whole middle school and the high school. So it's not like that we were doing them a big favor. I mean, people were standing in line, I thought the kids, I said, "We're either going to get bathrooms or catheters," thank God we decided on the bathrooms.
Right.
Because these kids were standing in line forever up there to go to the bathroom. And so, I mean, it's not like we did anything great and wonderful for Cell Creek and say, "Well, honey, we gave you a school, that's all you're going to get for a while." We just years liked getting that done.
And just circling back to the list, I think when you were talking about Saudi Daisy Middle, I think you were looking at the capital projects, but in our, in our list, that was, a lot of this is generated between principal feedback, principal feedback and then internal discussions, but for Saudi Daisy Middle, we, right now, we're proposing $709,000 to be invested in that school. We just completed a million-dollar roof as well, so...
That was awful nice, too.
Yeah.
Still to get rid of the snakes, we appreciate that.
Windows there, yeah, it's on the proposed, yeah.
Mrs. Hill.
Thank you. I'd like to talk about some of the bigger picture issues of the budget. First, I, as I have studied this, and I have definitely studied it quite a bit, I am really pleased with how much it aligns with our strategic plan. I appreciate the way the percentages of the budget are really speaking to the values that we have. I don't know how much the public has looked at this or if it stood out to any other board members, but 51% of our budget would be going toward accelerating student achievement, I think that really matters. The next big chunk is great teachers and leaders, I think that is important, that speaks to the fact that this is a student-centered budget, that is about moving our students' academic achievement forward, and I know that as a mom, that's what I want, that's why I'm on this board, is because I want every one of our students in Hamilton County to be ready for what's next. And I recognize that there's going to be some changes that have to come to get us where we want to be, and it is going to be an investment. So that said, something that really made me smile, and I'd like Brent to speak to it a little bit, is on page 25, Brent, there is a section here about a three-year financial strategic plan. Let me get to page 25. A three-year strategic financial plan, a multi-year view of capital needs, and a comprehensive five-year capital plan. I'm thinking we've made some foundational investments with the MGT contract to look at all of our facilities, so I know that, anyway, can you, can you speak to that? Because I think this is a level of sophistication that Hamilton County taxpayers should expect.
Sure, so a strategic financial plan would start in fiscal year '21, and it would run through the end of our strategic plan, the final three years, so it would be a three-year strategic financial plan. In the past few years, there's been a movement, it was...
strategic financial plan. In the past few years, there's been a movement, it was sponsored by the Government Finance Officers Association, and they created a lot of tools and a lot of resources that could be used by K-12 school systems throughout the country. There's actually a website, SmarterSchoolSpending.org. And there have been several school systems, Knox County was one, Lake County, Florida was one, that did a lot of successful strategic planning around both, you know, like what we have with Future Ready 2023, as well as a financial strategic plan. So, there's a lot of best practices out there that we can borrow from. Essentially, though, what the strategic financial plan would do is it would align, it would develop priorities and principles for how we align our budget dollars with the strategic plan focus areas. So, it's really just memorializing what we've done this year with implementing priority-based budgeting and aligning the budget with the focus areas. So, we would hope that the board would adopt that strategic financial plan, and it would focus around all the KPIs that are inherent to our strategic plan, it would focus on the focus five targets. And also, an important component, like you mentioned, is capital planning. So, that's one thing that we haven't done a whole lot of as a school system historically. So, the goal would be to develop a five-year plan for capital maintenance specifically, because we, since we don't build schools, that's the responsibility of the county commission, we could put some views in there for what the school-building plans would look like. But again, since that's not our responsibility, wouldn't be a core component, it would be more of an attachment to a strategic plan. But we will develop a five-year plan on how we're going to attack certain areas of capital maintenance, and a lot of that would be informed by the report that we get back from MGT, and considering what the plan would be to actually build schools as well, as change, you know, any other changes that they recommend. And then, we could build out a five-year view of what we think that would look like. But as far as operating goes, it would align, it would just further align all of our operating dollars to the strategic plan, specifically in order to achieve the KPIs that we've set forth.
Thank you, thank you for that. I see tremendous value in operating our system in that way, and I look forward to getting there by 2021. I think we, every person on this dais, I think, I know at least for myself, I should only speak for myself, and for Rhonda now, because Rhonda said it just a minute ago, I have a school that feels like they're the redheaded stepchild. I actually have, well, probably five schools out of my six that think they're the redheaded stepchild. And I've also noticed in my service that I have entire communities, and it's every community that feels like they're getting the short end of the stick. And so, I appreciate that we work toward our strategic plan, and we work toward our financial strategic plan, that in fact, we will be working toward our big-picture goals. I think that's something that taxpayers should expect out of every county organization, honestly, and I'm proud, I think we're probably the first ones to have done it, or be headed that way, maybe other than, say, Erlingor Hospital. Okay, so, question. Ken, this may be more for you, about transportation, you know, this is something that, an access that I think is really important. On page 17 of the document, we make mention of conversations with CARTA. So, it says on page 17, "Transportation Options," this was a community priority and key investment, including funds to support a partnership with CARTA to provide transportation options for future-ready institutes. But then, and so that made me happy, and I want to know more about that. Because then, on page 41 and 46, transportation is mentioned again, but in a less hopeful way.
Did you say 41?
41, yeah, and 46. So, on page 41, it's listed under the list of requests not included in the request for funding, or requests not funded in the FY '20 budget, says providing transportation for out-of-zone students to all future-ready institutes is not funded here. And then, as I looked at the efficient and effective operations grouping of budget line items, again, it just wasn't mentioned, the expansion of transportation wasn't mentioned, though there is the line item, the $18 million, $18.6 line item to include transportation, et cetera, et cetera, and a large public carrier. So, I just want to make sure that I know what we're planning. Oh, you can speak to more of that, okay.
So, on the amount in the budget reflected for the partnership, potential partnership with CARTA is $250,000, that's what we've included in the budget. On page 41, where you see unfunded transportation for future-ready institutes, the reason that's in both places is because it wouldn't be fully funded, right? To fully fund it, we really don't, we don't know for sure, because we don't know what the growth will be in students, but because it's a lot of cross-county transportation, to fully fund transportation of future-ready institutes would be pretty expensive, in the millions of dollars. But that was a request. So, to keep the integrity of the process alive, we put the portion that we did fund in the budget at $250,000, and we still listed it as an unfunded component. That way, we can keep that on the list for next year and the year after. And all these unfunded portions are going to be components of the strategic plan as well. Doing a look-back period to prior year is going to be a portion of the strategic financial plan on how we plan our operating dollars. As far as the discussion with CARTA, I would let Dr. Johnson talk about that more specifically.
So, where we are with that conversation, you all know, we had, say, about 125 students that initially, for this year, that have applied from, initially applied from out-of-the-zone school to go to one of the institutes. The conversation with CARTA materialized after the opening date of, after the closing date of application, so to speak, for future institutes. So, in the conversation with CARTA, it appears that there is some strong promise there. And so, as a result of that conversation, as Blake and I came back, what we did in work with communications is put out another communication for anybody that may not have applied because they just knew going into the application that transportation was going to be a barrier. There were approximately 70 additional names, so there's approximately 200 students that could potentially be impacted. So, our next steps, what we've done is taken, identified their addresses, and then, we have an upcoming meeting with CARTA, in which we'll sit down with those addresses, look at where their stops are, and see if there are stops that are there. We'll also work with Ken and David and see if, even if there's not a stop in their location, if we can get them to a stop in their location. There's obviously a part B of, you know, the parent being willing to use CARTA as a viable option. But what the placeholder for the 250 allows us to do up to about 250 students, and what we've appropriated is for our four trips a day at a significantly reduced rate, and that's to school, from school, and to and from, a job, or a dual enrollment, or an internship, or, you know, whatever else. So, we've tried to fund it that way. Obviously, just candidly speaking, in comparison to transportation, the traditional structure, whether it be a contracted driver or a contract, there are significant savings if we're able to pull it off with CARTA versus doing it the other way. So, again, that initial conversation was very promising, we've done our legwork in regards to identifying the students that are interested, have identified the addresses, and then we'll have the part B of that conversation here very soon.
It sounds like a really pragmatic approach to that. I've been in plenty of cities where I've seen children using public transportation, and I think that's exciting and could be good for the city as well. Okay, thank you. I imagine I'll have some other things to say later, but that's all for now, thank you.
Mrs. Robinson.
Sure. And I agree with Jenny on so much that she said, I won't recap, but I will address the multi-year budget, that's something that we've actually been asking for, for now three years, or at least I know I have. So, I'm excited to see something written about that, because that means we're going to be able to hold your feet to the fire on that, so. But I know you won't back down from that. I actually have some questions around revenue. And so, under proposed revenue summary, I just wondered if you could talk a little bit about the $6.9 million that's on the state education funds line, where you have it listed, proposed fiscal year '20 versus budget fiscal year '19. I just wonder if you could talk a little bit more about where that $6.9 is coming from, and do we know for sure that it's coming? Like, are these actual numbers?
Yeah, for the $6,974,000-
Yes, yeah.
So, $6,465,000, even of that is BEP allocation. We have received our first BEP allocation letter from the state, and that is the amount that they've told us we will get. We'll get another letter in July, see if it goes up or down, but that's the amount we expect. There's also, you remember, some of the state, some of the grants that run through the state were previously included in federal and self-funded programs, those have had to, have been transferred in the general fund budget to comply with reporting requirements by the state. So, the difference between the $6.5 million and $6.9 million are those grants.
Those are grants, okay. Okay, thank you. My other question is, oh, I was, I guess I was a little surprised to see that we've allocated nothing for seller property in the upcoming budget, only because, you know, with, and maybe, maybe the timing's off, but with, you know, what's going on with Highway 58, we know that we're going to move Harrison and Hill Crests down. I didn't know if, you know, are we already, are we not expecting any type of seller property for this upcoming fiscal year, or is it more that we would expect it in the next year?
Yeah, I think a lot of that's going to depend on what we get back from MGT, and anything that would be sold in fiscal year '20, we would ask to amend the budget down the road. Historically, we don't budget for seller property unless we're certain that it's, and we think we know what we're going to get. Like, I think with East Brainerd, for example, East Brainerd Elementary, we actually amended the budget to put that in there.
Okay.
But yeah, that's typically a line item, we just kind of wait on.
Okay, that makes sense. I was just curious about that, since we know we're doing so much of our real estate. Okay, that's great, thank you.
Mr. McLendon.
Can someone talk about the base, the staffing base model that we're going to? I noticed that we're adding several assistant principals. Just kind of how did we get to that number? Because I know if this goes through, we're adding a fourth assistant principal at Udoa.
Yes, so I'll talk about that briefly, and then I'm going to ask Dr. Edwards to speak about it, because she does a much better job than I do at most things, but especially about the staffing model. The, so, using the staffing model, and she can talk to you about, specifically about the inputs, it uses enrollment numbers, economic disadvantage percentage, magnet programming, size of school, some other things. But using the staffing model, that generated seven new assistant principal positions, and those would be at Harrison Elementary, Eastlake Middle, Hickson Middle, Hunter Middle, Red Bank Middle, Hickson High, Howard High, Udoa High, and Tyner High.
I'm just wondering if we took into account East Hamilton Middle opening up and shifting of student populations when, I mean, I'd hate to hire a position and then, in a year, it's just not, you know, just because of student population.
Well, one thing, if we hire a position out there, and then, once we do open East Hamilton Middle, I mean, we're going to have, we're going to transfer some employees from, I mean, some teachers, assistant principals, other positions would have to transfer from East Hamilton Middle High, if nothing else, because you got different grade bands, and, you know, we would work through how that looks.
And I just, only thing I'd add is there are potential with East Hamilton Middle, and it'll come down to the high sum, but, you know, we'd anticipate a rezone proposal at some point. And so, Udoa, right now, is over 1,700 students, and as you back that number down, you'd back down the assistant principals, and they would be shifted to, whether it's East Hamilton Middle or wherever it is. The students, you know, the student number will change, but obviously, the staffing will shift with it.
Just, just a little bit of how we got, I mean-
So, the base staffing model, really, we started trying to work on this, because with ESSA, the state is requiring us to submit a statement around supplement, not supplant. And so, that means that every district has to define how do they allocate all of their roles to be able to ensure that we are not supplanting dollars that, with federal dollars, as opposed to supplementing. So, when we started that process, the first one was due in October of 2018, we struggled, because we didn't have a defined allocation model for our positions. And so, given that, we started the process of trying to make sure that we defined how it is that we allocate positions across the district. So, generally speaking, we went and we looked at all the other big districts. So, when the state came back and said to us, well, what you all submitted is not what we were expecting, because you don't have clear guidelines for how you allocate positions. They shared with us what the model looked like at Knox, at Rutherford County, at Shelby County, at Metro Nashville. So, when we looked at those models, and of course, I'd worked at Knox County and understood that Knox and Rutherford were very similar, Nashville has a more sophisticated weighted student funding formula, where they actually allocate dollars as opposed to positions. And so, they're doing site-based budgeting, which we haven't gotten to that phase yet. So, what we started was what looks more like what Rutherford County and Knox County do, which is come up with a target allocation based on factors like student enrollment, magnet programming, adjustments for small schools, because again, we do know when you have small schools, you have to add positions to make sure they get programming that's like larger schools. Also, the percentage of economically disadvantaged students, as well as whether or not it's a special programming like IB or STEM, et cetera. So, we started where we are, meaning we looked at the positions, Keith's team, we went through an extensive process of trying to audit the positions that we have, because our data systems, everything isn't labeled the way, you know, titles are conflicting from what we thought. So, it's been really a laborious process to try to go and interview all of the principals and school teams, and really, that's been Keith's team who's done that heavy lifting. And so, starting from where we are, we then started to kind of back apply a formula. So, like, there are some things we know, every school's getting allocated one principal. But then, we tried to look at what's the reality today of how many, for instance, secretaries there are at school. So, we could run an average and say, oh, well, it looks like we've been allocating like one secretary per 250 students. So, once you get to that average ratio, you then look for the places that, for some reason, they're only getting one secretary for 500 students, right? And so, you try to then start moving towards aligning them with what the district average has been for allocation, and then we lock that in as the target ratio based on where the average was. So, for assistant principals, we did the same thing. We looked at high schools, middle schools, and elementary schools, and saw where the allocations were currently. And so, for every 450 students, thereabouts, a high school is earning an additional assistant principal. So, that's how you get to 1,700 students, it's four hundred, or it's four assistant principals, and so on and so forth. So, we've started that process, and because, as we said, we haven't done that historically, this year, what we talked about was what we called a stability provision. So, sometimes, we're not going to be able to get to those targets in one year. We've told the State Department that over the next three years, in alignment with that strategic financial plan, we will move to a true base staffing formula, that they could look at our schools and like know what the staffing is, but it will take us time to get there now that we've set the ratio. So, we've done the first step, which is look at the data, do an audit of all the staffing at all the schools, back into what those target ratios were based on what we have today. And now, we're trying to right-size, to make sure that schools that for some reason or another were way out of whack, that we get them in whack, if you will, that's a technical term, over the next three years.
And a couple of things I would add to that is, you know, this will be an important component of the strategic financial plan, as well as having a fiscal allocation model for how we send funds to schools, because that also has to be standardized and documented on how we do that, and that way, everyone knows how it happens. And that's also an important component of the new ESSA reporting requirements, because we are going to have to, I mean, the reporting requirements are much different than they have been in the past, and we're going to have to start reporting stuff at a school-based level, and have evidence of how we decide to do that. And it's really, like she said, it's geared toward proving that we're not supplanting federal funds.
Coach Hylander.
Okay. Thank you. Several things. If any of you need to call me, my phone has been blowing up constantly. And so, I think one of my students today, in the alternative school where I work part-time, decided I didn't need it. So, they took it home with them, I think. And if you, they were trying to relieve me of some of the pressure I've been feeling from many calls. If you try to call me the next day or two, or text me, I am not ignoring you, okay? I am not- I am not. Hopefully, I'll get it back, or get another one, or get it all in iCloud, or whatever that stuff is. Okay. I'm gonna get Joe Smith to help me on the technology.
That's gonna be a bad call.
Hey, make sure you set a date and time, 'cause we can sell tickets for that.
Okay. Please don't be offended if I don't answer. I have been answering a lot of people, and I have run out. I will, like I say, Brent, several people I'd like to address, Dr. Johnson, his old staff at Brent, I'm gonna tell you, I may not always agree with you, but I appreciate your intelligence and your hard work ethic, and the fact that you went to one of my schools, and you didn't need to go to a voucher program to get this good education. Thank you very much.
Purple Pounder for life.
Sorry, I had to hit that in there, but, thank you, Dr. Johnson, and staff, Dr. Edwards, Keith, each and every one of you, you put a lot in here. There is nothing that is in the book, which I did not, looking at my phone, I didn't have time to go home and pick up my notebook, but, but there's nothing in there that is not for the benefit of the children of the system, or you guys have put a lot in there. I mean, I really think that. Counselors, train officers, social workers, I mean, everyone knows we're behind in capital. You know, we have been for years. I've, I'm concerned, every bit of research that I have done in the last, in many years, is that the single most, the single, single most important factor for each child's learning and achievement is the teacher in the classroom. The single most. Now, are there other things that are beneficial? Sure, sure, without a doubt. But the single most is having a qualified, caring teacher, and we have a lot of those. And, you know, I've talked to several of them, and I had, I've had not just one, several, some in this room, and quite a few that weren't, that have said, "You know, Dr. Hylene, if there's anything we need, don't give us the salaries, give it to kids." And that's good, to an extent. But, yeah, on the other hand, I know some teachers, I know one teacher that, two years ago, talked to me, this teacher had a master's degree and more than 10 years' experience, stay-at-home spouse, with, necessary, because one of the children, probably three children, they were eligible for free reduced lunch. I mean, and that's kind of, you know, that's kind of embarrassing to me. And, and I'm, everyone may not agree with me this, but we're losing some really good teachers, that not because they won't leave Hamilton County, but because they feel like, gosh, you know, I can go and make $5,000, $6,000 in surrounding county, a little bit more, maybe more than that, some, and maybe $5,000, $6,000, $7,000 is not too much to some of you folks, but it is to a lot of our teachers, to meet their needs. And to me, that's, to me, and I'm not, I'm one of nine, but that's my single greatest priority, and I'll tell you this, from having spent a lot of years in the classroom, and Dr. Johnson brought up a good point, you know, a really good teacher can take high numbers and really do well, and I agree with that, they can. But by and large, I tell you what, I can take 18 or 20 kids and do a heck of a lot better with them than I can 25 to 35, or 28, I mean, it just, if you get, and especially if you get some kind of rough ones, you got four corners in the room, if you have a square room, if you have a round room, I don't know what you do, but if you put them as far apart as you can, if you've taught, you know that, and you try to cut out the interaction, you know, there's, but we need, I wholeheartedly agree, we've got to support our teachers. This is just me, again, if we don't get anything else, we need the 5% raise. If we don't get anything else of this, we need that. But I hope we get more, I hope we get more. The capital improvement, I mean, we've talked about redheaded stepchildren. I've got a redheaded sister, and she always felt like older brother got everything, I don't know. But, but I know, I taught at Central High School, you know, in the nineteen, early 1970s.
I wasn't there back then.
You weren't? No. I thought you were one of my students about '72, that night, but when I went there. But, that school, until this track came, has had nothing other than the health department mandated cafeteria, they've had nothing in 50 years, nothing in 50 years. So, but, but anyway, there are a lot of our schools like that, that need something. But we do, they do have a football stadium, Rhonda, and I appreciate the alumni that built it, the alumni built it. I have talked to, well, another question, maybe for you, Brent, how much of the million-dollar expected growth money have we already committed? Do you know, I mean, do you have any facts and figures on that?
You mean the million?
The nine, did I say nine million?
You said a billion.
The nine, of the nine million, excuse me, need to nudge you a little better. My redneck is coming out.
So, as is with your priority, you know, it would be our priority to pay teachers as well, so, the, a 5% teacher raise would take up that entire amount.
Okay.
We also have committed an increase for transportation, and we have certain other contractual increases, like custodial and some IT licenses that increase every year.
So, the nine million's gone, and then more already, right?
Yes.
If we give that 5% raise, okay. That helps, yeah. I wanna tell you, I'll be honest, I have spent nights thinking and pondering and studying that notebook, and praying, forgive me if you're on rest, me go ahead, I pray, but I have been tossed and turned back and forth. I had a widow whose husband's funeral, I preached, called me, cried, and said, "If the taxes go up as much as I'm anticipating," she said, "I've got a hip replacement, I don't know how I'm gonna pay my bills, and they've got a modest house in three or four acres," and she said, "The $400 that the tax increase will be on me was more than I can pay. I won't have medicine or food that month I paid my, my land property taxes." Yeah. And we've got some relief for senior citizens. I'm, I've talked to commissioners, the four years I've been out prior to this past year, we've asked for quite a bit, all needed, all needed, and have always been come back, bring a balanced budget. Last year was the first year we've gotten anything, and we got, and I talked to a couple of commissioners, we got approximately, with a 10% addition to the property tax, and it all went to buildings, which were much needed, and our taxpayers paid about, in my district, 25 to 27 cents more, the dollar. Our, for every million dollars we raised, it's an extra one penny on, on property taxes. So, the 34 million that we need is gonna cost the taxpayer 34 cents more. I'm not saying it's wrong, do we need it? Yes, we do. And I'm just saying, I'm not sure that our commissioners are gonna go with us on that. And we need to be cognizant of that, and be careful, and I just charge you, my fellow board members, to pray and seek wisdom on making the right decision. Thank you.
Mrs. Thurman.
Yes, but I'll correct you on that, one cent's bringing in about $800,000. It's not quite a million, it's about 800,000.
Okay.
Used to be 500,000, now it's eight. We used to do site-based budgeting, we haven't, not evolving toward that, we evolved away from that. So, I don't know why we did, but, as with lots of things here, I don't know why or how it happened, but it did. Also, about the, I was gonna talk about the transportation in Carter. Why do we have to budget that? Why can kids not get tokens? Why can we not have some of our philanthropists that really wanna help the school system? I mean, that's just something we need to look at. If they wanna, you know, help the kids buy tokens, or give some money to that, that program, I think that would be something that they could do, without us having to, because, I mean, that's, like I say, it's gonna be in the millions. I mean, if we're just go, we can't do that, but I mean, it's something, if, some people have to have some skin in the game. If they want something, then they're gonna have to give something, you know? And so, just like we always did with magnet schools, up until Jesse Register came, I'll put my hand over my heart, that we used to, used to provide drone transportation to magnet schools, and so, because of him, we no longer do that, and so, that's cost us millions, I cannot tell you how many millions that has cost since he did that back in, what, 98? And so, I just think that's something that we need to consider, if students want to go to these future-ready institutes, especially if they wanna go to a job, or something like, we should certainly not be paying for that as a school system, I wouldn't think, especially, like I say, when some of our schools don't have teachers. I think that that's something that we need to consider.
Mrs. Lynn.
I wanted to ask about the, first of all, I'm, I like how we've listened to the community and aligned the budget with the community priorities. And I wanted to specifically ask about the special acad, special education and academic intervention, and the, how we're gonna increase the special education teachers, and who can, like, is that gonna be at specifics at all the schools, or are we gonna focus on the schools where we already have special education programs?
Yeah, so, so those additional staff are student-driven, and so, it's all based on the, it's all based on the individual student. And so, what Garfield and his team did was went through and looked at the current state of students and IP's and situations, and worked to create as many inclusive settings as we can. And you all know, there was a three-year plan that was presented, I guess, last year, and this would allow us to get all of our settings across the district inclusive, and so, it's, it's purely student-driven. And in some schools, and you all know this, in some schools, you have, you have students with severe disabilities where, you know, and it's isolated, but you may have a student with a one-to-one assistant. And so, it'll be based on the IP's and what they've looked at in the students, and so, that's the driving factor behind it.
Well, I mean, I know that some students have literally had to move from, to go, to be able to go to a school, and I just am wondering if we're gonna be able to alleviate...
That is correct. So, so, he is working on a kind of a two-year, between this year and next year, and you all can chime in, correct me if I'm wrong, but he's working on kind of a two-year, making sure we have programming at all the schools, so that we don't have, you know, students that have to go to school X for a program, as much as we possibly can. That's been a major point of conversation, or was a major point of conversation, in regards to the inclusive ed group. Anything to add, Justin?
Thank you.
Mrs. Robinson.
Ah, I know what I was gonna ask. So, now that our budget is fairly public, and, you know, we're getting a lot of media attention about it, I've actually received a few emails today from constituents, one that I think that we were all copied on, and there was a good question asked, and it's, you know, will there be discussion out in the community before we are asked to vote on this budget? Or, like, is there any plan around getting more community input around this budget specifically? And I think that people are asking for this, because, I mean, there's, there's a request for an increase, so I was curious your thoughts on that? Is there a plan for that?
So, a couple of things, and I may defer to communications to talk, or our team can talk a little about what we've done so far. So, we, we obviously had community sessions in each learning community prior to the construction of the budget, because, you know, candidly speaking, our budget needs to align to what's important, and not just us, but what's important to the community, and then, we take those things back and see how they align to our strategic direction. The Part B that we've done, so we've, so that's one step. And then, the second step that we've taken, which we think is the right step to take, is we've gone out into the community, so, we've been to Signal Mountain, we tried to do one in each learning community, we went to Signal, y'all have to help me, I Lookout Valley.
Hickson Middle.
Hickson Middle.
Saudi Daisy High.
Saudi Daisy. So, we've had four. Well, we're coming around, and so, we're trying to get these learning communities, we're coming around. I know there's two, Tucker and Keritza, I know that we don't necessarily have something specifically in the district, we try to look at learning communities, and so, we've got several next week, I don't know if you can even mention the ones we have next week.
Oh, you do, oh, we do?
Udoa Elementary.
Udoa Elementary and Westview Elementary.
Westview.
What date, what date is Howard's? I don't think I knew that. Okay. Oh, it was? Okay, I'm sorry. Well, I mean, I think it's, I mean, I think it's awesome that the public's asking more about the budget. I mean, I haven't really seen that happen before, in my three years being here, but I do think that if people are now asking from a little bit of a different angle, I think we should figure out how to accommodate that, but, okay, that's good, thank you.
And just as a point of clarity, really, it's two-part in those conversations. Part A is to talk about the budget, and at a high level of what's, what's within the budget, and answer any general questions that are there. Then, Part B is, we've been partnering with HCEA around the salary schedule, because it is a different look to the salary schedule, and there've been some great questions there. In fact, we got great feedback, and something we'll wanna clarify in regards to EDS, and I'll, sure, Keith can share with you later that feedback, but, so it's been two-part. One, to share the budget highlights, but then, Part B is to make sure that employees understand the salary schedule and the implications, because the lanes have been compressed.
Mrs. Thurman.
Yes. Nikia, on this formula that we're using, staffing formula, some principals may not want another assistant principal. I mean, if they have what they feel like is a sufficient amount, when we talked about site-based budgeting, can they say, instead of another assistant principal, we'd rather have two more teachers, or something like that? Will they be able to have that kind of autonomy?
Absolutely.
Yeah. We've already had that happening. It doesn't quite work out to two more teachers, it could be like a teacher and an assistant, but there are principals who've already asked to trade, and so, they decide if they don't want the allocation of that specific position, if we can figure out what's a budget-neutral combination of other positions, they certainly can have those.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have any other discussion? Mr. Smith?
Yes, if I, if I may weigh in, Mr. Chairman, great, great discussion, and I remember about three years ago, when I was a real rookie, and a budget was presented to us that was $19 million upside down. And, as I recall, I may have forgotten, 'cause I am getting a little bit older, but I kinda led the charge, so, let's do a balanced budget, and then have a list of needs, and we did that, first time that, that the board had presented a balanced budget in several years. And I think the county commission at that time was very proud that we did that. And now, fast forward three years, and I've got a few more white hairs, and a little bit more experience, and, and what I've seen, I believe, is that in three years, that, that this board, along with, over the last 18 months, a new superintendent and new staff, that there has begun to really build a level of trust in the community, and the transparency of this superintendent and of this staff, in terms of keeping us informed of what they're doing, and decisions that they're making, is just unbelievable to me. Sometimes, I wish Dr. Johnson quit texting me so much. So, I just think that, you know, we talk about timing, and I've heard some people say, "Well, it's not the time." Well, when is the time? I mean, we, we, some great things are happening, I've been excited ever since Justin, the other night, when you shared the benchmarks, and how exciting that is, and I gotta believe here in a couple of months, that there's gonna be some excited folks over what we're gonna see. I believe that, based on the information that you've shared with us. I, I, I just, and I can only speak personally, as we're all speaking, but I really wanna trust my superintendent, and I wanna trust this staff, and I believe they've earned that, at least they've earned my trust, personally. And if there was ever an appetite, I think, if there was ever an appetite in Hamilton County amongst the masses, to invest in education in Hamilton County, I think the appetite is today. And, you know, there'll be those that argue, you know, let's wait till after the scores, and then, these great scores are gonna come in, and they're gonna say, "Well, you're doing such a great job, you don't need any," you know? That's what'll happen. So, nobody wants to pay more taxes, nobody, I don't wanna pay no more taxes, nobody does. But the reality is, you know, we could argue, was that really a tax increase that we had? Well, my taxes went up a little bit, not very much, so one could argue if that was really a tax increase, but when I learned the other day, and I hadn't heard this before, that, that, and I hope I say this right, that we hadn't had any operations money, other than growth, since 2005.
That is crazy.
Are you kidding me? I mean, how many, how many, how many businesses would still be in business? So, the timing is today. There's some things on the budget that I'm real pleased about, that I've tried to champion, and one of them is fees. that I've tried to champion, and one of them is, is fees going away, so I appreciate that, y'all worked to make that happen. I still want my buses moved, Dr. Bradshaw, and he was out at Hickson today working on that, and, and I'm, I'm gonna worry him to death till he gets it done. But I wanna be sensitive to, listen, I love sports, and, man, that's, that's bad, that we don't, those kids can't play football up there. But now, what I think I heard you say a minute ago, Dr. Johnson, was that this list is not firm, that it can be reevaluated, maybe some dollars can be moved around in this capital list, and, man, that's needed. Those kids, that's not fair, it's just not. And so, maybe, Justin, we can put off, putting in some new windows somewhere, or new carpets somewhere or something, and, and reallocate those dollars to, to take care of, those kids up there at Selkry deserve a place to play football, they do. But, so that's my comment, I've quit rambling. I, I do wanna ask just a couple of questions. You had mentioned SROs, so in this budget, are we gonna add some SROs? That's part of the question. And the other part of the question, do you know if Sheriff Hammond, in his budget, is gonna add any additional SROs? And then, if, if that takes place, if the answer to both of those is yes, then we'd be at the point to where we need to be with SROs. So, go ahead and answer that question, I got one more.
So, this budget doesn't appropriate any specific SROs, you know, we did something really unique last year in adding SROs, we had it seven, put a half a million dollars in our, in our own budget to add additional SROs, and it was, it was the right thing to do, even outside of what was going on at, at the national level with the Parkland shooting, it just was the right thing to do for our schools. We're at a point right now where every middle and high school has a school resource officer, and there is one in each learning community that serves the elementary schools, they're housed in the larger school in the learning community, but they work with all five, seven of the, of the elementary schools. I have heard, and I haven't talked directly to Sheriff Hammond, but I have heard that he has proposed some additional SROs, and then we work collaboratively in, in particular with Captain Bradshaw, it's Captain Bradshaw, General Bradshaw, Colonel Bradshaw over there, but Captain Shepard worked collaboratively on the placement, and, and try to work through that. And as far as where we need to be, every school won't necessarily have a school resource officer, but we're, we would be, if the sheriff was able to add some additional SROs, we'd be in a much better place than candidly we've been, because we would've added nine SROs or ten SROs in, in the course of, you know, a year and a half or two.
Right. My other question was, we, and I think I've mentioned it to you, but it's worth mentioning again, I really support, we, we, we've gotta take care of our teachers, we just do, and, so I really support that. I, I do think a piece that's missing, that I, I would hope that you guys probably have had conversations about, or, or maybe moving forward, we can have conversations about, is these athletic directors, I mean, if you, for example, Friday night football, they're, you know, they're the first one to get there, they're the last one to leave, same thing for basketball games, and, and we're not stipending those guys, and I'm not so sure that's fair, what we're asking them to do, and, and a coach gets a stipend, and he gets to go home when the whistle blows. But the athletic director, he's gotta close everything down, he doesn't get anything. So, I hope, I hope we can look at that and maybe figure out a way to stipend those athletic directors. Thank you for the, making those college counselors full-time, that's just vitally important. And then, man, I'm seeing hurting kids every day, hurting kids even from, from good families, families with money. I'm seeing hurting kids, and, and boy, we've got to do more social, emotional supports to support these kids, we just do, we're gonna lose a generation. So, that's where I'm at, appreciate the hard work, and, and guys, the, the time is now. Thank you.
Mr. McClennan.
I was just gonna kinda echo what Joe said, I think the time is, is now for this. Show my age a little bit, last time we had a tax increase, I was in the fifth grade at East Brandon Elementary, the old one. So, you know, as someone that has went through the system without arts, without a counselor, without social workers in there, it's changed, this world's changed a lot since two thousand and five, and there's nothing in this binder that does not benefit students, like Steve said earlier. So, I think, I think the time is now, and I think in this, this year and a half, we've, at least the time I've been on the board, I trust Dr. Johnson, I trust his staff, nothing has led me to, to go away from that, so, I just, if anyone has not read at least the first fifty pages of, of the summary in this budget, it, it's some good stuff, it really tells you that, that this district cares about where we're going with our children, that we're ready to invest in our teachers, and, and finally, let's make this turn that we need to in education that we've been struggling through the last couple of years.
Mrs. Hill.
Tucker gave such good comments, I don't want to say anything more, I think we should call the meeting.
Coach Highlander.
Or Steve.
I think Mrs. Hill has a, a child that has an activity she needs to go to.
That is untrue.
Well, now, if Joe doesn't want me to, I was gonna amen something he said, but if he doesn't want me to, I want, I do think our ADs, we have historically had a five percent supplement that has been on the books but not paid for quite a few years. I'd like to see that come back if at all possible. Also, I, I talked to a young lady when I visited one of the schools, I said, "She looked athletic," I said, "Are you an athlete?" She said, "No, sir, I'm a dancer." I said, "Ma'am, that is an athlete. Cheerleaders are athletes, dancers are athletes," and, and whenever possible, I, I think the sponsors of these extracurricular activities need something similar to what athletic coaches get to. That's just my, my comment, thank you.
That was short, right? Mrs. Robinson.
Yeah, I'm just gonna make...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Ms. Thurman.
No, I wanna, I wanna end for Jenny on a good note, so go ahead.
Well, I just wanna make one comment about the SROs. I do feel like, shouldn't we be asking Sheriff Hammond, if he's gonna be asking for an increase in his budget, to help us with more SROs? I mean, I have schools that could absolutely use two SROs.
He's been in the jail for it.
Yeah. Well, they got, they got jail money. They got jail money.
He's been in the jail, he ain't trying to stay in there.
Well, okay, I didn't get what you were saying until now. I got it, I know you do. I gotcha, yeah, I, I got it. But anyways, I, I certainly think that we should be making that ask, and I'll gladly call on myself too, so.
All right, Mrs. Thurman.
Yes, like I say, I've, I've sit here, and I have to smile, I've heard so many of these things, and I told Dr. Johnson when I met with him on Tuesday, I said, "Before you say anything, I'm gonna tell you what you're gonna tell me," and I did, and, because I've heard it all before. And every year, we're gonna make magic happen, and everything's gonna be unicorns and lollipops and rainbows, and it always is gonna be that way. And I've just seen us give, I've seen the school system get millions and millions and millions and millions, and I think I asked Brent the other day, how, what was the budget a few years ago, and we, we've blown it out of the water, I think, from the, when the school systems merged, and I mean, we've more than doubled the school budget, I think, it was two hundred, not quite, it's awfully close to doubling, since the school systems merged, and we have less students. So, it's, you know, like I say, I know that some people think I'm just such a pessimist and, oh, but you're one of these days, you'll be sixty-two years old, and your kids will be growing to think, "My God, we had the same conversation thirty years ago," and you'll see where I'm coming from. But, so like I say, all this stuff looks warm and fuzzy, but I'm a very common sense person, I don't get into all this pie in the sky stuff, I wanna see the results. And Joe, just for the record, I did tell Dr. Johnson, when he said, "Rhonda, you should see our embargo, scores are so good," I said, "You're doing it without all that money, do it again." Now, I already told him that. So, so you say, you know, that's what people are gonna say, this, people did say it. So, and I still mean it, because the teachers are working hard, they're doing a good job, and so many of these things, I just, like I say, they all sound good and look good, just not real sure how necessary all of them are, but, and like I say, I'm more about behavior, I hate the fact that we're gonna have to have two SR, you know, we need two SR officers for some of our schools, that's sad. I think it's because we let things get out of hand, but I told you all that, and I'm not gonna rehash all that. But that's where I'm coming from, like I say, this is not my first rodeo, second, third, fourth, or fifth, it's been many, and I've heard the same song. I could've just written this meeting out, and I told you what was gonna happen, but anyway, that's where I'm coming from.
Now, Rhonda, for the record, you are, you also told me how much you liked me at that meeting. You did, you did, you did.
I said, "Don't ever take anything personally, it's okay, but I'm like here, we're friends, I mean, I, it's good."
Mrs. Hill.
Quickly, if we're gonna talk about stipends, we have to talk about the stipends for fine arts. One, and since Rhonda shared that, I, I appreciate the historic context of all of this. The past is in the behind, I believe they said that on Lion King. I wanna put our past in the behind, I think Joe is right, we are at a different time, I feel very hopeful about this system, we are seeing progress, our community is feeling hopeful and excited, and this is not four years, six years, eight years, twelve years ago, it's just not, and we can put the past in the behind and move forward, and quit talking about "it used to be," and blah, 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 and blah, blah, blah. Let's take this big, bold plan and move forward.
Mrs. Jones, did you get your lot?
Yeah, I just wanted to know what, where, I know, I know where this goes, but can we just stick it in here, or is it a...
We can ask, Mr. Goldberg, after, after the meeting, we can ask him that.
Where is the tab for it? Yeah, I mean, I know the tab.
Those are, those are replacements for some of the positions that were in there that contained some errors, those are the most com, most recent documents.
Mrs. Thurman.
Yes, I'm not real sure, but I think Jenny just told me stick something in my behind. Just wanted to remind her, just wanted to remind her that I am from Sadi Daisy, and we're not even the one up, just want you to know that. And, no, I just want you to also know, people that don't know history, there's a, there's a saying about people that don't know history, "You repeat it, and we've repeated it, and repeated it, and repeated it." Just thought you'd wanna know, one of these days, when you're sixty-two years old, you're gonna say, "Rhonda Thurman wasn't so stupid after all."
I do not think you're stupid, I've never said it once.
Meeting adjourned.